All right, thank you everyone for being here. Today is Tuesday, April 15th, and this is our regular meeting agenda. I'm calling this meeting to order and giving notice to the members of City Council and to the general public that at this regular meeting, the City Council may vote and go into executive session, which will not be open to the public for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can I get roll call, please?
Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet, Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember House.
I'm here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Spence.
Here.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews, will you lead us in the pledge?
It would be my honor, please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Spence, our mission statement?
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, and Aslan, our land acknowledgement.
Our what? It's always my pleasure. The City of Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next we have approval of minutes from previous meetings. I will take a motion to approve unless someone would like to make a comment or a correction.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to move to approve all of the meetings listed on item 4A on the agenda.
Thank you, and I will not make you list them out.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We are down to open call to the public. Open call to the public enables the public to address the council about an item that is not on the prepared agenda. Comments relating to the items that are on the agenda will be taken at the time of the item discussed. You need to fill out a card in the back, and you will have three minutes, and because you are commenting on an item not on the agenda, we can't ask any questions or answer any questions. And DJ, you are first up.
I was here February 18th talking about what had happened to me at Walmart. I was wrongfully terminated. I wanted to be here today because I need to speak on something. What do stories such as the Count of Monte Cristo and the Revenant have in common? They are stories about being wrongfully accused, losing everything, and eventually being made whole again in a major way. Like I mentioned, February 18th, I was exiled from Kimball, Arizona as a result of a financial rug pull. I was immediately made homeless all over again. What did I do next? I spoke with Department of Economic Security employees in Kimball, who agreed that discrimination was a part of my problem. They drafted a complaint which went to the Attorney General's office. They did reach out and conduct an interview, but they sort of feigned disinterest. I suspect, however, that their disinterest was a red herring and that an investigation is actually underway. Furthermore, I applied for unemployment insurance. Why? Because an interview requires shelter, hygiene, and diet. The money would allow me a hotel room the night before the interview, the hygiene to make me employable, and an opportunity to eat correctly. What do I know today about personal injury? I'm not going to like what happens next, because the injury tends to snowball, and that's what is happening. On Tuesday, February 11th of this year, two DES Employment Insurance employees pled guilty to bribery. They were ordered to pay $2.9 million restitution along with serving a 30-month prison sentence. They are both adjudicators who evaluated claims for unemployment insurance claimants such as myself. Long story short, they denied claims until receiving bribes. In a post last week on X, Musk Owns Doge announced an initial survey of unemployment insurance claims since 2020 found 24,500 people over the age of 115 had claimed $59 million in benefits. There's fraud there. Guess what department has denied my unemployment insurance claim? Guess what department has forced me into continued homelessness without a chance of employment? Adjudicators in the unemployment insurance division of DES since November of 2024. That's five months. Five months after being wrongfully terminated of zero income. Zero income for five months after being told to hit the road, Jack? I mean it. And they did it incorrectly when they did it? I told you last time that they did it incorrectly when they did it? They pointed at me, they said, "That's not DJ, that DJ is some other guy in some other dimension in Bullhead City." They said, "I walked into the HR area and stole the blue vest." It's all negligence, it's craziness. I've been homeless for five months since then, they made me homeless. So to recap, what do stories such as the Count of Monte Cristo and the Revenant have in common? They are stories about being wrongfully accused, losing everything, and eventually being made whole again in a major, major, major way. You're looking at them. 2025, at the end of this year, I won't be homeless anymore.
Thank you. Next we have Craig Zanetto.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Craig Zanetto, Economic Development Administrator. I hope you're not too tired of seeing me up here. This makes three times in the last four weeks, but I do appreciate your continued time and attention. First, I want to extend my sincere thanks to Vice Mayor Sweet and Councilmember Spence for your support at all three Innovate Green events this past weekend. Your presence meant a lot to the participants and our community. I'm excited to share that the Innovate Green Business Pitch Challenge was a success, and we identified a standout winner. Jason Jones with his patent pending design for the Tech Genie. This sustainable aeroponic vertically grown food system impressed our judges across all competition criteria. Tech Genie reduces water usage for growing food by up to 90% and increases growth speed by 30 to 50% compared to traditional farming. It's fully automated, scalable, easy to set up, and can be used indoors, making it ideal even for places like Flagstaff with colder climates. The product line will also include a greenhouse and future iterations. Though Tech Genie is still pre-revenue, Jason has already had multiple pre-orders and has shown a true commitment to community impact. He attended our pre-event workshops to sharpen his pitch, and he's already donated equipment to support the Southside Community Garden with more on the way. Since the event just wrapped up this weekend, I wanted to keep you all updated. We're planning a more formal presentation from Jason and Tech Genie soon, along with an update from one of our last year awardees. Thank you again for your time and your ongoing support. And off the record, but go Eagles.
Thank you. Eric Fort?
Yes, I'm here today to address the council as to an issue that it may or may not be aware of, of doubt. I am part of the unhoused community here in Flagstaff, and there is a community organization known as Fat Cats that provides services to the unhoused community here in Flagstaff, really good organization. And one of the things that they do is a couple times a week, they provide a shower bus down at the joint center where all the buses come together down on Phoenix. There has been an issue that has come to my attention with parking down there, where they have, in providing the service they do, are being required to pay for parking so that they can go in there and provide their community service. And I know a number of the people who have gone in there for services have also either gotten warnings or citations for parking. And as persons on the lower end of the economic scale and an organization that is not, that those funds that they have been fining to pay for parking could have gone to better resources to pay for and assist the community that they're serving. I believe that the council should take a look at the situation of parking for community organizations when they put on regular, ongoing events such as this, and maybe provide some relief in those situations. I thank you for your time, and please give this your consideration.
Colleen Maring.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Colleen Maring. I'm the Chief People Officer and Chief Legal Counsel at Northern Arizona Healthcare, and we're excited to be here today in the month of April, which is Donate Life Month, and we try to take time during this month to help our partners at the Donor Network of Arizona educate our communities about the value of organ, eye, and tissue donation. There's about 100,000 people living in the United States on waiting lists for organ or tissue donation to save their lives or vastly improve their quality of life. And it's our honor and responsibility at Flagstaff Medical Center to facilitate those life-saving donations and carry out the wishes of members of our community who have chosen to donate life. Last calendar year, we supported 15 donors donating a total of 40 organs or tissues, saving 33 lives. And so far this year, we've had two donors give eight organs or tissues, saving seven lives. And I want to share a little bit about what this looks like when you're inside Flagstaff Medical Center and how we honor the life-saving decisions of people who we lose in our community. So whenever someone at an NIH hospital who is a donor does succumb to injury or illness, we hold what we call an Honor Walk. Any employee or colleague who's available can pause their work and line the hallway between where the patient is coming from and the operating room where their life will ultimately end in the donation of life to others. We make an overhead announcement honoring the hero in the house and facilitate the family accompanying that hero on their final journey to our operating room. It's an incredibly special event, there's not a lot of dry eyes in the hallways, and it's truly an honor to help carry out our donors' wishes and celebrate those individuals with their families in those moments. As the 100,000-person waiting list shows, there's not enough organ and tissue donors in our communities, so this month, we're spending time educating about why and how you might consider donating. We'd encourage everyone to go to donatelifeaz.org, where you can find out how to register as a donor and get resources to help you discuss that decision with your family, so your family can best honor and respect that decision at your end of life. We will have a flag raising ceremony, the Donate Life flag, at 11:00 AM this Friday, April 18th, at the flagpole on the west side of Beaver at FMC, and one of our own employees from our Surgical Trauma Intensive Care Unit and her daughter will be there to share their donation story, and we'd love council and the public to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we are down to proclamations and recognitions. We're going to start with the recognition of the Flagstaff High School State Champions Girl Basketball Team, and then we'll do the proclamation for sexual assault awareness. Flagstaff Eagles, can you join us up here and council? Down? The City of Flagstaff recognizes the fortitude and leadership needed to be victorious at the 2025 State Champions of the Girls Basketball 4A Conference. The City of Flagstaff recognizes the sound of the swish, the exact passing, the epic defense, the squeaks of shoes on the gym floor, the significant courage, hard work, and dedication to the teammates, coaches, and the Flagstaff Eagles program culminating in the third-ever championship in girls' basketball. The City of Flagstaff commends the entire team for achieving this pinnacle accomplishment and for the last time to hear the roster of the 2025 State Champions of the Girls Basketball 4A Conference. Players: Nyla Davis, Lexi Neal, Sunshine Baghouti, Kaya Tate, Nadia Nez, Kylie Walker, Presley Dixon, J.J. McClellan, Teagan Martin, Shailen Benali, Shandon Blue Lake, Carter Edison, Lacey Walker, Oriana Joshi, Kenny Bitsui, Gabby Nichols, Maya Jo, Audrey Edgewater, manager, coaches, and athletic director, Nalise Nomakima, Cassie Schrader, Jessica Herbell, Tyrone Johnson, Janine Brandl. And this is dated 15th day of April 2025. Congratulations.
Okay, first off, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor and Council for this honor to recognize these young ladies and the hard work that they put in. This team was special in the sense that coming in, we had a lot of new faces, and the expectations from outside of the organization was minimal. A lot of people didn't think we would win our region, and so to go on to win the region and had the fortitude to really push and win the state championship was special, and it's just a testament to the work that they put in. And so it was just a pleasure coaching this group. I appreciate the support that I get also from the City of Flagstaff, from our Pro's Director and our Assistant Parks and Recreation Director, to allow me to be able to be on this journey and to coach these fine young ladies. So thank you very much, thank you for the honor, and definitely appreciate it.
Gather round, be friends, get close. It's my honor to read this proclamation. This is a proclamation for, well, I'll just start. Whereas April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time to bring attention to the widespread issue of sexual violence and empower communities to take action. And whereas this year's theme is Together We Act, United We Change, highlighting the power of working together to create safer, more respectful environments for all. And whereas everyone deserves to live in a safe and supportive community where they are treated with respect. When we work together to uphold safety and respect, we make progress in preventing sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. And whereas nationwide, over 53% of women and over 29% of men have reported experiencing sexual violence. Whereas in 2024, Victim Witness Services of Northern Arizona worked with 198 adult survivors of sexual violence and 176 child survivors of sexual abuse, and NACASA provided 72 forensic exams for sexual assault survivors. And whereas the City of Flagstaff encourages all community members to work together to promote education about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. Now therefore, I Lori Matthews, on behalf of our Mayor Becky Daggett, Mayor of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Thank you.
I have learned my lesson, and I have come prepared this time. So it took seven years. Thank you for joining us in recognizing Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This month is a time to honor survivors, raise our collective voice against sexual violence, and recommit to creating communities where safety, respect, and consent are non-negotiable. Sexual violence does not discriminate. It impacts people of all ages, backgrounds, and identities. But awareness is power, and when we stand together, we not only bring these issues into the light, we begin to change the systems and silence that allow them to persist. We are here representing Victim Witness Services for Northern Arizona, Northland Family Help Center, Sharon Manor, and Nakasa, and we walk beside survivors every day. We see their strength, and we carry their stories. Our work, whether in crisis response, in courtrooms, exam rooms, in shelter or in healing spaces, exists to ensure no survivor walks alone. This month and every month, let's continue to believe survivors, hold offenders accountable, and build a future where prevention is not a dream, but a reality. Thank you.
Matthews.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Early in April, the Indigenous Commission had their meeting mainly to review the regional plan. Their big report comes from the CJCC. Been very busy the first couple of months of this year. We have a Justice Bus, and that's an event where they bring different services out to remote areas. So on March 21st, the Justice Bus event was in Tuba City, and it brought Superior Court Services, Elections Recorder's Office, HHS, Victim Witness Services, all were in attendance. We had a total of 20 hearings held, which included warrant quashing, expungement application
We had a total of 20 hearings held, which included warrant quashing, expungement applications, name changes, a marriage license, and a wedding. Three people paid their court fines in full. 10 people used the Elections Express Vote Machine. The Recorder's Office verified names and addresses on voter registration rolls. HHS did four applications for utility assistance. We also had information from Arizona At Work, 988, Triple P Planning, Parenting Class Information, and statewide Mental Health Crisis Line. This is a very proud service that we provide the whole county, going out to people who have a hard time coming in and meeting the courts here. So, we were very busy. I think also the CJCC presented to the Board of Supervisors on the criminal justice system and its impacts, improving community safety and wellness on March 25th. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. The Library Board met during our last council or Capitol Projects Retreat, so I went ahead and watched it online afterwards. This month, during the Director's Report, we learned that our downtown librarian, Miranda, took her vision for an interesting children's program to the Eastside Library in partnership with Willow Bend Environmental. This program was a puppet show where participants could learn script writing, puppet design, and theater ethics culminating in a puppet show designed by the participants, which were the kids themselves. I believe that that puppet show will be going on the road this summer, so keep your eyes out for what's going on there. Our library has taken part in what is known as the Big Read. We know about that because I think we might have helped fund a portion of some of the activities. The Big Read is a community celebration where, as a community, we read a book collectively as a group and enjoy a myriad of activities associated with the book throughout the month. This year's book is called "There There" by Tommy Orange. The Downtown Library is hosting a writing program that coincides with the Big Read. And my favorite part and agenda item on that meeting was the talk about the new kiosk or the kiosk for cultural passes. For those that don't already know, the public library checks out a cacophony of different items beyond books, and one of those is now a cultural awareness apparatus. Our most recent and significant addition to the folks that things can check out is cultural passes to visit Lowell Observatory. So, if you want to go, if you have a library card and you want to go to Lowell Observatory, just go check out a cultural pass and get on your way up Mars Hill to enjoy some of that good old Lowell stuff. On another note, also during past Capitol Retreats, just after that, I was honored to give the opening statement for our Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Discovery Stroll, Pathways to Sustainability Event. This Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program is designed to provide for creative projects that enhance community sustainability and promote healthy lifestyles throughout community partnerships or through community partnerships. These grants have helped support 80 sustainable projects for the Flagstaff community over the past 10 years. The grants awarded this year, the grantees that are the functions that the grants were awarded to for this year were for food security, local food growers, waste prevention, resilience for local natural spaces, community skill connection development, sustainable education, and alternative nodes of transportation. These projects not only help to further City Council's priorities, but also contribute to our, to assist with our carbon neutrality plan. And while I am excited to announce that many of the grant applications will be awarded funding to help our community, the venue in which this event took place, known as the Market of Dreams, which also received a grant as a community resilience hub, had their promised grant funding removed as part of what I'm assuming is Doge cuts. I need to look a little bit deeper on that, but it was really sad to see such a community asset taken away from us through the hacking of our budget at a different level than us, you know, at the federal level. It hurts to hear, but I'm pretty excited about the grantees that were awarded, that they will be taking that sustainability, carrying the sustainability torch for all of us here in Flagstaff. Thank you, Madam Mayor, or Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan?
Councilmember Garcia, thank you so much for that detailed update regarding sustainability. I don't have anything to add to that. I'm going to pass for it at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Apologies that I'm not there in person today. I'm a bit under the weather, but briefly, my liaison report, we have an upcoming Commission on Diversity Awareness meeting tomorrow that will discuss some upcoming proclamation opportunities. The Northern Arizona Book Festival just took place this past week, and I was honored to be able to speak on a panel at NAU on the career paths of some members who served as editors on the Thin Air Literary Magazine and were graduates of the Master's or MFA program at NAU, and was able to share a bit on how my degree in that program also contributes to my role on City Council. So that was a nice presentation to be part of. With housing, they recently met and discussed CDBG funding, and also is a good opportunity to remind our community that April is Fair Housing Month. And on Friday, April 25th, from 9:00 to 12:00, the City of Flagstaff Housing Team will be hosting a fair housing training in collaboration with the Northern Arizona Association of Realtors and Southwest Fair Housing Council for continued education and exploration of federal, state, and local fair housing laws, including scenarios and examples, including assistive animals, reentry, criminal background checks, and so forth. There is an invitation to register ahead of that session, especially for those who may need continuing education credits or certificates of attendance. All are welcome to participate in that session, and that will be, again, Friday, April 25th, in council chambers. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I am the council liaison to both Open Space Commission and the Transportation Commission, which has two committees, the pedestrian committee and the bicycling committee. Both of these commissions have recently made their presentations to the council, so I'm not going to review them at this time, but I just want to say that it's an honor and a privilege to be the council liaison to these two very active councils. Thank you.
Thank you.
Correct, commissions.
Thank you. Last night, there was a B-PAC meeting that I had to unfortunately miss because I was here doing a joint meeting with the county, so I will catch you up next time on what was said at that meeting. Thursday, there is a Water Commission meeting, 4:00 PM here in council chambers, and Friday, there is a NAMWA meeting, so lots of water topics that I will report on next time. Thank you. So we are now moving down to the Consent Agenda, A, B, and C. All matters under Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine unless a member of City Council expresses a desire at the meeting to remove an item from the Consent Agenda for discussion. The Consent Agenda will be enacted by one motion approving the recommendations listed on the agenda. Unless otherwise indicated, expenditures approved by council are budgeted items. So I am wondering if there are any items you would like to pull for further discussion, or can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as posted.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We are down to routine items, and we have 9A, which is Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-17 and Ordinance Number 2025-05. And this is our second read, so I don't believe there's a presentation.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-17.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Do I have a motion to read?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Thank you. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Chapter 1-14 Personnel System by adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2025 Suite of Employee Handbook Changes, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We are down to our regular agenda, and first up is 10A, Consideration and Approval of Grant Agreement, City of Flagstaff and Federal Rail Administration Infra Grant Agreement for the Downtown Mile Safety and Connectivity Improvement Project. And I believe Christine is online.
Yes, Vice Mayor, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Okay, great. And you can see the slide presentation?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Christine Cameron, project manager with City Capitol Improvements. So this item is for approval of a USDOT Infra Grant Agreement between the City of Flagstaff and the Federal Rail Administration. So this document, which is attached, defines the project scope and establishes grant management responsibilities in between the city and FRA. So, this probably looks very familiar. We went over this yesterday evening, but the project components, the scope, includes the Florence to Walnut pedestrian underpass there on the left. Moving over, we have the Milton Road Underpass, which will allow us to phase the project in and keep two continuous rails in construction, also provide BNSF a third main line. We have the Rio de Flag pedestrian underpass, which will be a connection of our foot trail in between City of Flagstaff, City Hall, and the Mountain Line DCC, and that bridge will also convey the future Rio de Flag realignment. And then we have the Beaver Street and San Francisco Street Highway Rail Grade Safety Crossing upgrades, so rail safety components there for both vehicles and for pedestrians. And you'll notice that the Amtrak platforms are not on this exhibit because those are actually covered by our newer Chrissy grant and not this Downtown Mile grant. So the project construction is funded by the USDOT in the amount of $32,460,000. And City of Flagstaff in the amount of $12,300,000. BNSF Railway at $11 million, and then Arizona Department of Transportation Smart Funds at $3 million. So the design completion is scheduled for the end of this calendar year, December of '25, with, allow us to get started with construction in the spring of '26, and construction completion is scheduled for 2028. That is the end of the presentation, and I will take any questions. I believe Stacy Brickler-Nags is also on the line to take anything regarding the grant agreement, so.
Thank you, Christine. Council, any questions or comments? Okay, I am not seeing any.
I would like to move to approve the grant agreement as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Moving down to Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-15, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving a renewal of the intergovernmental agreement between the Flagstaff Police Department and Arizona Department of Public Safety for the Get'em State Gang Task Force. Welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Colin C. with the Flagstaff Police Department. I have the honor of serving as your Deputy Chief of Patrol. I'd first like to thank everyone tonight for allowing me to present on this topic. Chief Colin and I, we are committed to the transparency on how we police our community, so I feel honored to be able to share this opportunity to discuss this process that we have at the Police Department. So tonight, this is a renewal of the IGA between us and the State of Arizona Department of Public Safety regarding the State Gang Task Force, known as Get'em. A little history about Get'em. It started in 1992. It is a, it's a state-funded task force that has agencies from all over the state that come together collectively to battle gang violence and gang crimes and education in communities. In 1994, the Flagstaff Police Department put its first task force officer in the unit, so we've had this partnership for over 31 years. Currently, our IGA is valid. It expires in July, so we're looking to renew that tonight with your permission. A little bit of financial impact, we're staffed at 119 police officers by the city manager's budget. Two of those positions are grant-funded through this IGA with Get'em. That comes out to $230,000 approximately for two officers. It's a 75% match, so we are basically reimbursed from the state approximately $173,000 is what we get out of this. And then also, it comes advanced training from the unit. I myself was in the unit, as well as Deputy Chief Hernandez. We built a network and training that developed our careers to the positions that we're in today. So two of our positions come from this. I think a little bit of historical, too. In 2024, you know, we saw an increase in gang violence in our communities, some of that being violent crimes, some of that being tagging in various neighborhoods where we've had to call on the State Gang Task Force from outside of the community to come in and help us with some of that intelligence that was going on there. We have been out of the unit since 2021 due to staffing. Our staffing has increased over the last year, and we're looking to put two new detectives in that, hopefully starting this summer to help with that mission. Yeah, that's, that's all I have tonight. I'm here to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Councilmember House, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have had a couple of questions from community members because of, primarily because of the naming of this IGA as the Gang and Immigration Intelligence Team Enforcement Mission. And particularly, there were questions about Item 4, which is labeled immigration and refers to Arizona Revised Statutes 23-214 and 41-4401. Both of those statutes have to do with employment verification and the ability to inspect people's records or documents provided for verifying presumably immigration status and how it's cited here. And I'm just wondering if you can speak a little bit more to the, to those references or what, what that actually is referring to in terms of this task force?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember House. Yeah, you're correct. The moniker is Gang and Immigration Intelligence Team Enforcement Mission, but it's immigration intelligence. Many communities experience gang problems that are, that are different than our community. There are transnational gang members in other communities that create a litany of crimes from international gangs that come in. crimes from international gangs that come into the state of Arizona. It's not necessarily the Flagstaff gang model. We have a lot of juvenile, a lot of youth that are influenced by adults. Our focus is going to be gang violence, violent street crimes, and serious offenders. We're not going to be doing immigration enforcement. We're not going to be doing employer verification checks. And just so this council knows and the community knows, we have full control over the task force, over our officers that would be in the task force. If they were going to do something that we didn't want them to do, such as what you're describing, we can pull them out of the task force and we can reassign them to other duties. Being in that unit for two years, in 2010 and 2011, we didn't do any type of employment verification. We didn't do any type of immigration roundups. But it is that immigration intelligence because there are transnational gangs in the state of Arizona, some may be aware of, that do cause some organized gang violence in Arizona. But, you know, we're going to contour this specifically to Flagstaff needs, as we've seen our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Colin, I was curious, when we talk about, we're going to focus on the immigration thing, just so we're perfectly clear moving forward, when we talk about that "I" in immigration and the "Get'em" moniker, that, could you explain, is that something that's new to the name? Or has it been around since, you know, SBE 1070 or back in those days?
Yeah, it was created in 2006 to address some of those transnational gangs that some communities in Arizona were experiencing. Again, you know, we haven't participated in any type of immigration roundups, and our task force would be strictly focused on our juvenile gang issues, education, and supporting our patrol division with, you know, patrols.
I think it's important to highlight that it's been in the name for quite some time. It's not something that's new to the equation, and we're not going to be attacking it like it is something new, because we're not seeing issues on that side of things. I also wanted to remind folks that there was a time when we had a lot of drive-by shootings in Sunnyside. We don't anymore, and I think it has a lot to do with the Gang Task Force back in the day. We have different kinds of gangs here in Flagstaff that need, you know, that, what I like to say is misguided youth in a lot of situations, where just regular Flagstaff folks that are participating in mischievous things that could get them into a lot of trouble later on down the line. And what I've seen the Gang Task Force do is stop that from happening and give them an opportunity to where now they're like team leaders for local baseball teams and stuff like that, and just regular old community members. But it could have really went a different way if I didn't see the Gang Task Force intervene, and not in a very heavy-handed way, just in an appropriate way. One comment that I wanted to make, it might be a question. What I heard from the community was the, I know you guys can't control what they look like, you know, what they're dressed like, but I remember back in the day, they looked like stormtroopers of death or something coming in at you. The other uniforms from the state agencies and stuff looked a little bit different, looked a little bit more imposing. So my hope is that we, where it's not necessary, we can soften that blow, and maybe you guys could help influence that. I don't want to intimidate people while we're trying to help them as much as possible where it's appropriate. I know that you guys are the experts at that, though, but that's just from my perspective.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that perspective, and there's a time and place, you know, for enforcement on gang violence and gang members, and there's a time and place where you can meet with juveniles, and I did that while I was in the unit, where you can sit down and meet and mentor and guide people out of those behaviors that creates potential career criminals and guide them towards, you know, being a positive community member. And we've had those outcomes from this unit, so I appreciate you recognizing that, too.
Thank you. And the last comment I was noticing while I was reading the packet, that it says that we could kind of disassociate ourselves with this program if it doesn't suit our needs. I know that that's not the intention, but if it ever got to that point, it's written, it's written in the contract, so there's nothing that's really binding us to this besides the years and years of support that we've had with this program and the success that we've had with this program and upholding our end of the bargain on that deal as well. I also like the fact that it's bringing, you know, intergovernmental relationships and more ideas to the team. So, thank you for that, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, sir. It's a really special partnership with us and the Department of Public Safety. One, the networking between officers. We can't, you know, do all law enforcement tasks by ourselves, but I can tell you, we had an officer, Tyler Stewart, killed in December 27th, 2014. It was a very tragic time for our Police Department. And Department of Public Safety, they took our road calls on the December 28th, and they rode with us and they supported us. So that partnership's very important, and we work very well together in the northern Arizona, I think better than anywhere in the nation. So I'm very appreciative of the partnership between the two agencies.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to make a side note comment, because it was mentioned about employment verification, just for the public, the community. And it could have changed. It's been a couple of years since I've been in the business space consulting for different businesses, but it is a state or maybe even a federal law, been on the books forever, that when you have a new employee, they have to fill out an I-9 form. You can look it up on the internet. And they have to show a passport or a birth certificate and another form of ID. There's no wavering about it. It has to be in the file. I'm looking at GIN, and is it still correct? So that part has always been enforced, and I don't know if some businesses can try to get around it, but it's a pretty heavy-handed enforcement that's been around for years, so I just wanted to bring that up. That is not a new concept. That is something that we've had for a really long time. With that said, I would like to move that we read Resolution Number 2025-15 by title only.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Department of Public Safety and the City of Flagstaff for the Gang and Immigration Intelligence Team Enforcement Mission, Get'em State Gang Task Force.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
I'd like to move, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-15.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Great, thank you. We are down to consideration and adoption of resolution number 2025-19, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Department of Water Resources and the City of Flagstaff for utilization of a global positioning system base station at Cinder Lake Landfill.
All right. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Sam Beckett, I serve as a section director in Public Works. We're just here for any questions or comments you may have on this item.
Thank you. Council, questions, comments? I am not seeing any.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to move that we read Resolution Number 2025-19 by title only.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you.
Sorry. A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Department of Water Resources, ADWR, and the City of Flagstaff for utilization of a global positioning system, GPS base station at Cinder Lake Landfill.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-19.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, okay, thank you. We are down to discussion items. Discussion item, Potential Resource Protection Pilot Program Zoning Code Text Amendment. Hello.
Okay. Neil Japman, City Flagstaff Fire Department. We've been talking about this for a while. I'm excited to take another step in our presentations here with you. So, we're going to talk about some of the challenges we're dealing with with our current forest resource requirements. We're going to talk about the intent of the pilot program we've been developing. Tiffany's going to take lead on zoning code text amendment and process and kind of the stakeholder review we've been doing so far. So, repeat of our usual message, frequent low-intensity fires required for a healthy ponderosa pine forest surrounding Flagstaff. These fires do not pose a community-wide threat if the built environment properly considers science-based defensible space and home hardening strategies. So that's really the big connection here. As we transition our forests through our restoration work away from risks of crown fire, we're not removing the role of fire in our systems, but we're going to keep that fire on the ground. And so what we're trying to do is really align some of that fuel and fire science work, both in the forest and our neighborhoods. So challenges with our current system, our forest stewardship plans are completed prior to development plans. So basically, we would, we're requesting a developer to go through and do some thinning of a site to make sure it aligns with our forest management plan. The forest stewardship plan is a specific document that the developer must provide for that site. Forest management plan are the guidelines for the whole city. And so when they do that, they're more than likely removing some trees that we would want to retain if we knew where the structures were going to be, and then they're also going to be forced to retain trees that conflict with our desired conditions. So current standards for tree retention in the zoning code are outdated and conflict with best available wildfire risk reduction science and resource protection standards. Purpose and goals do not prioritize public health, safety, and welfare. And I don't want to say at the time when those documents were written, people weren't concerned with those issues. It just wasn't as pressing of an issue as we see today with the obvious lessons learned from urban conflagrations like LA or Lahaina or the Marshall Fire in Colorado, or unfortunately, lessons learned here from the Tunnel Fire. So the intent of our pilot program really is to improve the integration of our citywide forest management plan, desired conditions, and our resource protection standards. We know we can mitigate these hazards in the built environment. The science is there. It's been tested. It's proven. We know how to do it. Ensuring built environment forest sustainability is also on the table by improving forest health, basically taking what we know about what a healthy forest should be and not ignoring that just because it's inside the community. So appropriate tree spacing, tree density, really is something that we know it results in healthier trees, results in higher carbon storage of large, healthy trees. And we can use some really cool new technologies to do this. So some of the same things we would do in the forest and how we scan the forest for tree density with new technologies like LiDAR, instead of going out and measuring and counting every tree, we can use remote sensing technologies to do that. We're planning on doing the same thing in our neighborhoods and really having that specificity of forest management, not just out in the forest, but in our neighborhoods, and developing new standards for development based on that best available science. Combined with these technologies, really helps us make sure that we're designing more fire-adapted and insurable neighborhoods.
This is our fun little transition slide here. We're ready to get going on writing an amendment for you all, and so tonight, we're looking for direction if that's the right best approach in taking on this pilot program. So the zoning code text amendment would look at revising the purpose and goals of our resource protection standards, like we said, to also prioritize public health and safety. And the program would be for a limited term of three years. It would be available to both greenfield development as well as infill on existing development sites, all of the properties that currently exist within the resource protection overlay. The goal for us is to learn as much as possible on all types of sites so that we can write the next best rendition of our resource protection overlay standards. This particular pilot program is only specific to forest resources, so the slope resource standards will remain in effect as is for all properties. It will be focused on the preservation of the highest quality tree resources. I have done all the nerd work that I possibly can, learning as much about forest resources as possible. And lastly, we will, because we are really opening up the framework and we want to learn a lot and we want to create the best possible code in the future, we will be asking that participants develop, we will participate in a contract agreement between the applicant and the city so that we can assure that we are still intending to meet the purpose and the goals of the resource protection overlay. So this isn't about clearcutting or depo station. This isn't a free-for-all of not meeting these standards. This is coming up with a new way that works well for development cases as well as works for our forest management requirements. So the process would basically start with a permit and agreement submitted prior to any of the analysis completed on site. Whatever imagery the city has, we are willing to share data with applicants. They may also need to pull additional imagery. This isn't 100% dependent upon just LiDAR data, but we're open to all of the technology that's out there that can get us the information specifically that we're looking for on these tree resources. We are looking for imagery that does provide a representation of tree heights. We're moving away from the diameter of a tree at breast height and moving more towards overall tree heights on a site. We will be working with on-ground verification, so staff will not only just be working with paper sets, we will go onsite and ground truth each one of these projects that participate in the pilot program to ensure that we are achieving what we need to and that the new imagery is providing us the data that we need. And lastly, the proposed development would be designed in accordance with that forest management plan. So when we're talking about the separations as necessary in the forest management plan to make sure that we're creating the best possible situations in our neighborhood, we'll be ensuring that as we work with the development with those forest resources. And in summary, our goal is to better align the forest stewardship plans and the natural resource protection plans, basically to develop them in parallel. We're trying to get ahead of the overall layout of the development on site, and we're trying to call out where the important resources are. We feel like we can make a lot of headway with the developer if we're at the early forefront end of this process. And then lastly, to develop revised resource protection forest resource standards that can reduce costs while also designing more fire-adapted and insurable communities. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them, but tonight, we're looking for direction on going forth with this amendment. If that is the case, we would like to have that amendment to you before you close for council break.
Thank you. We do have a couple of questions. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You said that this proposed pilot program is for new and redevelopment areas. Could this LiDAR technology also be applied to existing neighborhoods just to give a homeowner's association or a neighborhood an idea of, wow, now that it's here, but this is really, you know, a bigger picture of what should be cleared out for fire-wise and home hardening and stuff?
Absolutely. We were actually just talking about that today with a LiDAR expert in our community about, you know, we've been focused on kind of new developments, but we were saying, man, maybe we could go into our existing neighborhoods, get this LiDAR data either from ground-based data collection or drones or even some satellite technologies, and basically model what we think the neighborhood should look like versus what it does now and start figuring out how we get there. So the limit of this, I mean, it's, we haven't found it yet. So how we start using this technology to do the right stuff, we're just starting to scratch the surface now, so it can be applicable anywhere.
So if someone like me, for instance, wanted to invite the fire department out to use this technology in our neighborhood, could we contact you, or do we have to wait?
It's, we don't have a process in place for existing neighborhoods, but it's certainly something that we're working on. So I would recommend right now, keep working with our staff on the parcel level wildfire risk assessments that we're doing, because those can eventually play into the data collection that we're looking at as well. But the city has invested in LiDAR for the whole city. I believe it was flown with an airplane, and we're going through, trying to figure out if that meets the standards of being able to measure and detect individual trees, and it does. It's just, you know, depending on how fine a scale of manipulation of the data we want to do, sometimes that data works, sometimes it doesn't, and we might need a little different version of it. But that's what we're envisioning is being able to really have that kind of dataset, just optimize everything we're doing in the community.
Thank you. I, for one, am very supportive of this. I've mentioned it several times up here in the dais, that it's time for us to follow the science, and we all saw the devastation in California. And although we don't want just a flat, you know, city with no trees, of course not, we don't want to put our community at risk. In the contrast, [inaudible 00:08:29]. In the contrast between our forest and then in the city limits is crazy. We have such a density, so I think it's time that we look at the bigger picture and really keep our neighborhood safe while preserving our beautiful ponderosa pine trees. So I am giving you the thumbs up. I'll wait for my colleagues to pipe in.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd just like to ask a clarification on the, how you're going to structure, how you're proposing to structure the pilot. Is it going to be individual development proposals scattered throughout the city? Or is it going to be limited to a geographic area?
It will be for any property that's within the resource protection overlay, which I can tell you is sort of the outside of the donut of Flagstaff. So the central core of Flagstaff that was pretty much already developed by 1990 is outside of the resource protection overlay, and we will not be applying the pilot program to those properties. But everywhere else, anyone that wants to pursue this, whether it's a greenfield or infill site or an already-developed and they just want to add additional maybe density to a site, we will be working with those property owners.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I see that Councilmember House has a comment, but I do have a public speaker request, so should I take that first, Councilmember House, and then you can do your comment?
That's fine.
Thank you. So Jessica Gerard?
Hi, I'm Jessica Gerard. I'm past president of the Northern Arizona Association of Realtors, a Realtor in town, a small business owner, and also a lifelong resident. And we are fully in support of this pilot program. We are seeing new homeowners face hardships in obtaining insurance. We are seeing current homeowners, I'm sure even maybe you guys up there have had your insurance agent call you to say either your rates are going through the roof or that they're dropping you entirely. Me personally, I had an insurance, my last insurance company, my rates went from 1,300 to 6,500 a year due to the fire and then the subsequent flooding. So if any of this will help, the cost of homeownership in Flagstaff, which we already know is very high for other reasons, the pricing, the interest rate, and we don't want to add not being able to obtain insurance to that. If you have a mortgage on a home, you have to obtain homeowner's insurance. A mortgage insurance company can, you can get government-based insurance, but it's very, very expensive, and homeowners could be forced to be foreclosed on if they can't make that payment. So again, our association and myself, we are very in favor of this program. Thank you.
I have a question, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Do I take questions? Well, I don't mean to put you on the spot by any means. I just, I'm kind of just grasping for somebody who might have a little bit more knowledge than I do about these type of things. Do you think that, or is there any evidence? Have you heard any studies? Have you heard the talk around the office? Whatever your level of expertise is on this idea, is there evidence that these type of actions will help lower the rate of insurance?
So he can probably help us, but from what my knowledge is, we are rated via fire-wise, we get a number. I don't know how often that is taken into account, but any action we can take should help with that. We don't want to be like California with their flood insurance and their fire insurance, and that's really what Arizona has been in danger of. Me personally, I've been in the room with Mark Kelly voicing this problem because it is a huge, it is a really big scare for Arizona. But again, I don't, I can't say exactly how, but it definitely couldn't hurt.
Yeah, no, that's really, that's really refreshing to hear from a community member that's in the practice. And that's really all I was trying to get at, not some sort of scientific expertise. But I really do appreciate you taking the time to answer that question for me. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
I think I would just add to that. At the end of the day, we fix this by stopping burning down homes and wildfires. So the more work we do to make a fire-adapted community, the more we're going to bend the curve, bend the needle through this on fixing the insurance challenges.
I appreciate that comment, Neil. Thank you very much. I always, just in the back of my mind, I still got to get to the bottom of this at some point, but these are for-profit companies that seem to be doing just fine, and I'm wondering, like, at what point do we really start seeing our savings? I'm hoping that all of this stuff that we're doing will help out. I do want to see evidence, not from you, but just in general, in the next 10 years.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Thank you for both presenters on this. I just wanted to acknowledge that as we're talking about, you know, acknowledging the science and acknowledging the current state of where we're at with our forests and resource protection and all of those things, one of the things that really stood out to me in the executive summary and background information on this was the acknowledgement of the damage that's been done by, and I'm reading, I'm looking here to be able to read specifically from the information section. It says, "Unfortunately, more than a century of management based on excluding cultural burning and suppressing lightning-based ignition has left the forest in an altered condition. These changes threaten Flagstaff's natural resources, economy, built environment, water resources, municipal infrastructure, and quality of life." So what I really appreciate in that is the acknowledgement of the, not only the updated state of what we're battling here, but also the importance of re-engaging some of that, those cultural practices for forest management that I know, Neil, I've heard from you in the past, how important and significant that is in these sorts of considerations. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you for bringing that to the table as part of the consideration of what we're doing here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Neil, I'm supportive of this plan. I think it's going to do good for things moving forward, and it's going to help us kind of reimagine this idea of resource protection and the way it could work with especially, you know, fires as we move into the drier seasons and stuff. And really, what I'm seeing now is a lot of development that are taking maybe the tree number or whatever and putting it at the very back of the law and then just developing the whole front end. So it's almost pointless in some ways to have arbitrary numbers surrounding these. And I also know that you've talked about, you know, caring about our resources as preserving the ones that we should, and that's why I'm going to support this. Has a lot to do with you. Thanks, and your team.
Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, thank you. So Neil, I'll just sort of re-encapsulate some of the things you already know where my position is. I think we've been talking about this for a while. I'm fully in support of anything we do to maximize and optimize Flagstaff's fire-wise sensibility and fire readiness. And you are our go-to scientist and expert and lead on exactly what that entails, and so I emphatically trust your leadership and the science and the scientific method that you bring to the table to do this. Pretty much full stop at that point. We should be doing this because it's the right thing to do. It's the smart thing to do. It's the safe thing for our entire community to do. It's the community-wise thing for us to be, to have our mind focused on. I have to say, I share the skepticism that Councilmember Garcia has evoked with regard to insurance companies. They are under no obligation or compunction whatsoever to lower rates because we're doing good stuff here. My instinct is that they kind of have a good thing going with the excuse to be able to raise rates on whoever and wherever they want to. They're not going to stop doing that just because it's the responsible thing to do. That effort has to come from a very focused, very deliberate, and very articulate and coordinated policy, strategy, and effort at state capitals and at the federal level. That's what's going to lower insurance rates. It's not anything we're doing with regard to this process or any other fire-wise or fire-ready activities or sensibilities that we have as a community. So let's keep our eye on both balls, but let's recognize that one does not affect the other at all. And that's me, perhaps I'm a pessimist when it comes to that, but I think it's a realistic approach and a realistic expectation and a realistic way to think about the insurance industry, which does not have our best interests in mind. It has their bottom dollar in mind.
Thank you for that. I think, you know, we probably two years ago would have said, oh, you know, we're going to come up with these great ideas and potentially see discounts on insurance. Now we're in the space where our goal is to maintain insurability in the private market in case we end up with some sort of shared option, sort of like a fair plan in California. So I think, I think you're right with your statements, and that's our hope now, is that we can, we can keep people in the private market versus some of these more expensive, less qualifying alternative options that are forming in different states.
And let me just clarify. I think anything we do here is going to help our cause on the other front, for sure. So without these things, we'd be in a worse position even if it was just from a perspective of, you know, our righteous cause. We're not doing our part. How can we expect them to do their part? But we are going to be doing our part. We're going to be doing it to the best of our ability. We're going to be doing it collectively as a community, and we're going to be doing it according to the science. And we're doing it because we want to keep each other safe. And when we do all those things, it might give us a helping hand on the other front as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I just want to just finalize a comment to say that it would be nice, and I know there's a lot of different groups, we're working with our state representatives and our federal representatives on the insurance issue, but for me, it's about keeping our community safe, and a bonus would be that it also helps with our insurance. But we have a very dry season coming upon us, and we can't reverse what we've done over the last couple of years, but at least we're moving forward. And I think this is so critical, and I'm so happy that we are taking action today, hopefully, for future developments to improve the state, the safety of our community. And that's the number-one priority in my eyes. And if we get a benefit, a little icing on the cake to help the cause and the argument to reduce our insurance or get better coverage, that's a bonus. But right now, if all we get is a safer community, it's a win. So thank you.
Thank you. And I would also like to lend my support to this, and thank you for your work. I did get my insurance canceled, and it was because of what we're talking about tonight. And it was a very scary moment. I didn't know what was going to happen, and it took me a little while to find a new insurance policy. I was able to do so. But, you know, this is something that is going to affect our community, and I just, it is a partnership. It is, we're tackling things from all angles. We want to be safe. We want to be fire-wise. This does affect our insurance, so I just appreciate all of your work on it, and I'm very supportive. Do we have any other questions or comments from council? So I believe you have direction?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I am not seeing any open call to the public. So we're down to informational items to and from mayor, council, and staff, and future agenda item requests. And I will start with Councilmember Spence.
In light of this month being Organ Donor Awareness Month, the presentation that we heard from the NAH representative is dealt with cadaver organ harvesting and donation. And that was certainly an impressive number of organs that have been donated through Northern Arizona healthcare. I just want to say, there's the option of living donor donations with regard to kidney donations. And anybody under 65 years of age who is healthy, who does not have a family member that might need a family-related kidney, can go to the Organ Donor Network and make your own kidney available to the next person on the waiting list. And I did this 22 years ago, and I'm healthy today, and it's a great satisfaction to have given, given up one kidney. So keep in mind, living donor organs are very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember House had to log off. She's not feeling well. Feel better soon. So I'm going to throw it over to Councilmember Aslan.
Nothing this evening, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I wanted to give a shout-out to those that I saw at the commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living event. It was one of the more rambunctious events. I saw David dancing in his chair, and I saw city manager nodding his head quite a bit during the festivities and the cultural dancing that was happening during that. It was a really cool event, and I really enjoyed catching up with everybody. Also, moving forward, we have the Earth Day Celebration at Busch Master Park, April 19th. And if you wanted to participate, that starts, I think, at 11 to 2 p.m. There's going to be a whole lot of things out there for the kids and for adults to celebrate Earth Day and all the sustainability things that go along with it. If you wanted to meet up at Flagstaff Visitor Center on your favorite two-wheel or three-wheel option, there's going to be a bike ride that starts at 10 o'clock, and the staff from Metro Plan's going to go ahead and lead that. I'm hoping to be back in town by then, so I can jump on that ride as well. It's something that I've always enjoyed doing as long as we've had it. And that ride will go from the Visitor Center through the foot trails all the way down to Busch Master Park to kind of get our juices flowing for the riding season, because the riding season is amongst us. I also wanted to shout-out to the commission or the council members that I saw at the green, or the Innovate Green Initiative event. There were some really awesome ideas happening there, and I enjoyed spending the evening with those guests. I think I will save my fare for next time so I can word it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of things. I thought it was exciting that Flagstaff and Mountain Line were hosting the Transportation Conference for the Nation right here in beautiful downtown Flagstaff. I was still out of town yesterday when they toured the new DCC building, but I was told, and I haven't seen it in a couple of months, that a train went by, and the architects and the builders made the wall that backs up to the train tracks really nice and thick, and when the train went by, nobody could hear the train. So that's going to be a wonderful addition. I can't wait to see all the wonderful, just small little details that they've done to bring Flagstaff and our surrounding environment into that building. It's going to be quite the gem for Flagstaff. So we also have a Mountain Line meeting tomorrow, and I think that is it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of things. I did take the tour of the DCC yesterday, and wow, it is incredible in there. And Heather said that I could set up shop and do some work. It's so pretty and nice and bright, so. And I did want to just congratulate everyone who was in the Innovate Green Challenge event, and really to thank staff. They worked very hard. It went seamlessly. A lot of just time went into that, and I just want to congratulate staff. It was a great event, and I can't wait to participate again. And that's all I have. And city manager Clifton, anything tonight?
No, thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right. With that, I think this meeting is adjourned. With that, I, I think this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.